One more time, testing one-two, testing one-two.
Awesome, fantastic. Let's revisit that. So we were on excused absence. So like I said, Commissioner Sharon did request an excuse absence for tonight. If there is a maker of a motion in a second to approve her excuse absence, please state your names.
Merrill Platzer and I excuse the absence. Or Commissioner Bridgerone.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Stein approves the motion, seconds of motion.
Great. And we should defer to the city clerk for a roll call vote.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Commissioner Platzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reinhardt?
Aye.
Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Roth, you have approval four to zero.
Great, thank you. Moving right along, we'll move to our public comment section of tonight's agenda. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items not listed on the agenda that are under the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. If you have something to distribute to the planning commission, please do not approach the die. Hand your item to the city clerk to distribute on your behalf. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker. The speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons addressing the planning commission shall not engage in disorderly conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. I will now defer to our city clerk to review any public comments.
Thank you. We did not receive any written public correspondence, nor do we have any speakers this evening.
Great, thank you very much. Moving right along then to our consent calendar. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items related to the consent calendar. I will now defer to our city clerk to review any public comments.
Thank you. No written correspondence or any speaker cards.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions from my fellow commissioners on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will now call for a motion in a second to adopt the consent calendar. Will the maker of the motion in a second please state your names?
Commissioner Stein makes a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Commissioner Platzer makes a motion to second motion to approve the consent calendar.
Commissioner Platzer makes a motion to second motion to approve the consent calendar.
Commissioner Stein makes a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Commissioner Stein makes a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Commissioner Stein makes a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Commissioner Platzer makes a motion to second motion to approve the consent calendar.
Commissioner Platzer makes a motion to second motion to approve the consent calendar.
Commissioner Stein makes a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Commissioner Stein makes a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Commissioner Platzer makes a motion to second motion to approve the consent calendar.
Commissioner Stein makes a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Commissioner Platzer makes a motion to second motion to approve the consent calendar.
Commissioner Stein makes a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Commissioner Platzer makes a motion to second motion to approve the consent calendar.
Commissioner Stein makes a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Commissioner Platzer makes a motion to second motion to approve the consent calendar.
Commissioner Stein makes a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Commissioner Platzer makes a motion to second motion to approve the consent calendar.
Commissioner Stein makes a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Commissioner Platzer makes a motion to second motion to approve the consent calendar.
Commissioner Stein makes a motion to approve the consent calendar.
One more time, testing one-two, testing one-two.
Awesome, fantastic. Let's revisit that. So we were on excused absence. So like I said, Commissioner Sharon did request an excuse absence for tonight. If there is a maker of a motion in a second to approve her excuse absence, please state your names.
Merrill Platzer and I excuse the absence. Or Commissioner Bridgerone.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Stein approves the motion, seconds of motion.
Great. And we should defer to the city clerk for a roll call vote.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Commissioner Platzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reinhardt?
Aye.
Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Roth, you have approval four to zero.
Great, thank you. Moving right along, we'll move to our public comment section of tonight's agenda. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items not listed on the agenda that are under the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. If you have something to distribute to the planning commission, please do not approach the die. Hand your item to the city clerk to distribute on your behalf. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker. The speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons addressing the planning commission shall not engage in disorderly conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. I will now defer to our city clerk to review any public comments.
Thank you. We did not receive any written public correspondence, nor do we have any speakers this evening.
Great, thank you very much. Moving right along then to our consent calendar. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items related to the consent calendar. I will now defer to our city clerk to review any public comments.
Thank you. No written correspondence or any speaker cards.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions from my fellow commissioners on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will now call for a motion in a second to adopt the consent calendar. Will the maker of the motion in a second please state your names?
Commissioner Stein makes a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Commissioner Platzer makes a motion to second motion to approve the consent calendar.
Great, thank you very much. I will now defer to our city clerk for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Platzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reinhardt?
Aye.
Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Roth, you have approval four to zero.
Thank you very much. We will now move to our first item on tonight's agenda, a public hearing. Our next item is to conduct a public hearing to consider a request to approve a list of prohibited land uses for the commercial parcels within tract 53752, the shops at Oak Creek, amend the planning commission resolution number 771, and make a determination of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act. I will now open the public hearing and defer to our community development director, Denise Thomas. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Roth, Planning Commission. The item that we're going to bring to you this evening is somewhat unique. This is an existing shopping center that was entitled with a list of uses that they, that are prohibited. The property owner would like to expand the opportunity to use, to have other uses in the development. And in order to do that, they have to change the resolution with the prohibited list. Katrina Garcia, our associate planner, will present to you this evening a very detailed explanation of the project and provide you with any information. And we're available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. As mentioned, this tonight's item is a resolution to amend a prohibited use list at a commercial shopping center on Canwood Street. So tonight I'll cover the background and history of the site. I'll go over the location and the existing uses, the applicant's proposal, and lastly, staff's recommendation. So on June 12, 2002, the city council adopted a resolution that permitted the development of several vacant and undeveloped lots on the north side of Canwood Street. The development included several commercial buildings to allow for a variety of uses that range from retail, restaurant, and other services. Development also included multifamily residential units. Part of the conditions of approval required the applicant to provide the city with a list of prohibited uses for the commercial portion of the development site, which was to be approved by the planning commission and then legally recorded against the property. The purpose of the condition was to restrict the types of uses that were typically allowed within the underlying zoning district. The goal was to encourage pedestrian-oriented uses within the commercial center. The applicant then submitted the list to the city, and on March 4, 2004, the planning commission adopted resolution 771, which included the prohibited use list. On December 7, 2017, the planning commission amended the original resolution 771 and prohibited use lists to remove five uses from the list, which included alcohol-on-sale establishment, massage establishment, physical fitness club/studio, a print shop, and veterinarian/animal hospital. Removing these uses from the list meant that the uses were now permitted to be within the shopping center subject to the requirements of the CRS or the Commercial Retail Service, zoning district, and the freeway corridor overlay. Earlier this year, one of the property owners of the shopping center requested to amend resolution 771 again to remove additional uses from the prohibited use list. The subject site of the application is located north of Canwood Street and east of Canon Road. The site has been fully developed to include multifamily residential, which is highlighted in yellow, along with commercial buildings highlighted in blue. The blue-numbered lots are the subject of the prohibited use list and is composed of lots three, four, five, six, seven, and eight. Lots six currently comprises of a vacant restaurant. Lot seven has a Trader Joe's. Lot eight has a Homewood Suites. And lots three, four, and five consists of three commercial buildings now known as the shops at Oak Creek. It currently has a variety of uses, including Panda Express, The Habit, and Oaks Veterinary, just to name a few. Most of the tenant spaces on lots four and five are currently vacant. Due to the vacancies, the applicant proposes to remove the following uses from the prohibited use list, and that includes the addressing and mailing service, church/temple, convenience store, grooming service, locksmith, mail-order business, studio for voice and music, studio for dance, and studio for martial arts and gymnastics. The removal of these uses from the list will essentially now allow these types of businesses to operate within the shopping center. Most of these uses are already allowed by right in the CRS zone as seen in the table, except for a church, which still requires a conditional use permit. The FC overlay also does not have any specific prohibitions against the uses for removal. Before I close my presentation, I'd like to mention that a correction on the draft resolution will need to be made on section 1D. Parcel seven will need to be included in the list of lots that are part of the amendment. It's highlighted here in yellow. So with that, staff recommends the planning commission approve a list of prohibited land uses for the commercial parcels, numbers three, four, five, six, seven, and eight, within tract 53752, and amend planning commission resolution number 771, and two, make a determination of exemption under SEQA as amended. This concludes my presentation. I am available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Katrina. I will now defer to my fellow commissioners if they have any questions of staff. I will start with Commissioner Stein, if you have any questions.
I will defer to ask questions of the applicant.
Okay. Commissioner Platzer, do you have any questions of staff?
I will defer as well.
Okay. Vice Chair Reinhardt?
The only question I had is with the, removing these items from exclusion, so just to clarify, the church would still need to be permitted, correct?
That's correct. It would still need a conditional use permit subject to the approval of the planning commission.
Okay, and that's the only, that's the only one that would need that permitting with this new list?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
This is Chair Roth. I have a few questions of you, for staff. Question number one is related to actually the church. It seemed pretty specific that it was church or a temple, but I want to make sure that's also encompassing of other religious, possible religious institutions?
That's correct.
Okay, great, thank you. The second question is on the permitted use for a convenience location, convenience store location. To be absolutely abundantly clear, in the prohibited use, following the recommended resolution, a liquor store still would be a prohibited use. So in that location, would alcohol sales be allowed?
So is the question, will a liquor store still be prohibited?
Particularly in the convenience.
So if alcohol is being sold at the convenience store, it would be subject to a conditional use permit. If there is no alcohol within the convenience store, then no CUP would be required.
Okay. And to be clear, though, because a liquor store would still be prohibited, and then off-site sales of alcohol would still be prohibited, the applicant would have to go through this process if a liquor store wanted to come to the, to the location, right? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, great, thank you. That concludes my questions. Do any commissioners have any ex parte communications to disclose? I see everyone running for it. Commissioner Platzer?
Commissioner Platzer, I met with staff, and I also visited the property as well.
Commissioner Stein?
Commissioner Stein visited.
the shops at Oak Creek, amend the Planning Commission Resolution Number 771, and make a determination of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act. I will now open the public hearing and defer to our Community Development Director Denise Thomas. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Roth, Planning Commission. The item that we're going to bring to you this evening is somewhat unique. This is an existing shopping center that was entitled with a list of uses that they, that are prohibited. The property owner would like to expand the opportunity to use, to have other uses in the development, and in order to do that, they have to change the resolution with the prohibited list. Katrina Garcia, our associate planner, will present to you this evening a very detailed explanation of the project and provide you with any information, and we're available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you Denise. As mentioned, this, tonight's item is a resolution to amend prohibited use lists at a commercial shopping center on Canwood Street. So tonight, I'll cover the background and history of the site. I'll go over the location and the existing uses, the applicant's proposal, and lastly, staff's recommendation. So, on June 12, 2002, the City Council adopted a resolution that permitted the development of several vacant and undeveloped lots on the north side of Canwood Street. The development included several commercial buildings to allow for a variety of uses that range from retail, restaurant, and other services. Development also included multifamily residential units. Part of the conditions of approval required the applicant to provide the city with a list of prohibited uses for the commercial portion of the development site, which was to be approved by the Planning Commission and then legally recorded against the property. The purpose of the condition was to restrict the types of uses that were typically allowed within the underlying zoning district. The goal was to encourage pedestrian-oriented uses within the commercial center. The applicant then submitted the list to the city, and on March 4, 2004, the Planning Commission adopted Resolution 771, which included the prohibited use list. On December 7, 2017, the Planning Commission amended the original Resolution 771 and prohibited use lists to remove five uses from the list, which included alcohol-on-sale establishment, massage establishment, physical fitness club/studio, a print shop, and veterinarian/animal hospital. Removing these uses from the list meant that the uses were now permitted to be within the shopping center, subject to the requirements of the CRS or the Commercial Retail Service, zoning district, and the freeway corridor overlay. Earlier this year, one of the property owners of the shopping center requested to amend Resolution 771 again, to remove additional uses from the prohibited use list. The subject site of the application is located north of Canwood Street and east of Canaan Road. The site has been fully developed to include multifamily residential, which is highlighted in yellow, along with commercial buildings highlighted in blue. The blue-numbered lots are the subject of the prohibited use list and is composed of lots 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8. Lots 6 currently comprises of a vacant restaurant. Lot 7 has a Trader Joe's. Lot 8 has a Homewood Suites. And lots 3, 4, and 5 consists of three commercial buildings, now known as the shops at Oak Creek. It currently has a variety of uses, including Panda Express, The Habit, and Oaks Veterinary, just to name a few. Most of the tenant spaces on lots 4 and 5 are currently vacant. Due to the vacancies, the applicant proposes to remove the following uses from the prohibited use list, and that includes the addressing and mailing service, church/temple, convenience store, grooming service, locksmith, mail-order business, studio for voice and music, studio for dance, and studio for martial arts and gymnastics. The removal of these uses from the list will essentially now allow these types of businesses to operate within the shopping center. Most of these uses are already allowed by right in the CRS zone, as seen in the table, except for a church, which still requires a conditional use permit. The FC overlay also does not have any specific prohibitions against the uses for removal. Before I close my presentation, I'd like to mention that a correction on the draft resolution will need to be made on Section 1D. Parcel 7 will need to be included in the list of lots that are part of the amendment. It's highlighted here in yellow. So with that, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve a list of prohibited land uses for the commercial parcels, numbers 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, within tract 53752, and amend Planning Commission Resolution Number 771, and two, make a determination of exemption under SEQA as amended. This concludes my presentation. I am available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Katrina. I will now defer to my fellow commissioners if they have any questions of staff. I will start with Commissioner Stein, if you have any questions.
I will defer to ask questions of the applicant.
Okay. Commissioner Platschner, do you have any questions of staff?
I will defer as well.
Okay. Vice Chair Reinhardt?
The only question I had is, with the, removing these items from exclusion, so just to clarify, the church would still need to be permitted, correct?
That's correct. It would still need a conditional use permit, subject to the approval of the Planning Commission.
Okay, and that's the only, that's the only one that would need that permitting with this new list?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
This is Chair Roth. I have a few questions of you, for staff. Question number one is related to actually the church. It seemed pretty specific that it was a church or a temple, but I want to make sure that's also encompassing of other religious, possible religious institutions?
That's correct.
Okay, great, thank you. The second question is on the permitted use for a convenience location, convenience store location. To be absolutely abundantly clear, in the prohibited use, following the recommended resolution, a liquor store still would be a prohibited use. So in that location, would alcohol sales be allowed?
So is the question, will a liquor store still be prohibited?
Particularly in the convenience.
So if alcohol is being sold at the convenience store, it would be subject to a conditional use permit. If there is no alcohol within the convenience store, then no CUP would be required.
Okay. And to be clear, though, because a liquor store would still be prohibited, and then off-site sales of alcohol would still be prohibited, the applicant would have to go through this process if a liquor store wanted to come to the, to the location, right? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, great, thank you. That concludes my questions. Do any commissioners have any ex parte communications to disclose? I see everyone running for it. Commissioner Platschner?
Commissioner Platschner, I met with staff, and I also visited the property as well.
Commissioner Stein?
Commissioner Stein visited the site and also spoke with the applicant's retail broker.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Reinhardt?
I just visited the site and may have shopped at Trader Joe's last weekend.
And this is Chair Roth. I have shopped at Trader Joe's plenty of times, and I've drive past the site multiple times a week, and obviously did have a conversation with staff as well. Great, so now moving along, I assume we have the applicant here tonight. I will now defer to the applicant. You or your representatives will have a total of 15 minutes for your presentation. Sounds like you're gonna have some questions, so we'll keep you up there for a little bit. You may now come up to the podium here and adjust the microphone. Please watch for the red light. When the red light comes up, that'll indicate you have one minute left. Sorry, sorry, your time is concluded. When you have, when you see the yellow light, you have one minute left to wrap up your comments. Great, I'll now defer to you. Thank you for being with us, Stein.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, members. So my name is Chaco Jacob. I'm the owner of parcel 4 and 5. We bought the property maybe, it's about a year and a half. We have actively marketed that property for 18 months, and I don't know why we have not been able to lease that space. So, I mean, everything works for us. Trader Joe's, freeway visual access, but so I'm not able to really put a finger on why we are not able to lease. So finally, we got an LOI from My Gym. They are, you know, they are 600 locations. They are kind of a franchisee. So we were very excited about it, and so when we started to pursue it, we realized that that use is not permitted. So that pretty much triggered the whole application. And once we started the application, you know, I worked with Robbie and Katrina, and they were, you know, I started the process by asking the city what would they propose and what they are okay to, you know, remove. So that was our starting point, and that was the list that we came up together, and that's, that's just it. So if you have any questions for me, and before that, I just want to thank all of you for taking the time and putting us on the agenda.
Absolutely. A pleasure, and is mutual. Thank you for being with us tonight as well. Before we move on to public comments, do any of my fellow commissioners, I believe we have a few, have any questions of the applicant? I'll defer to Commissioner Stein first.
First of all, thank you for believing in buying a property in Agora Hills. We do like people acquiring real estate in the city. A couple of questions. Addressing and mailing service, I mean, what would you anticipate that kind of use being that you approached the city on?
So I think that trigger happened when, you know, there was a, there's a FedEx location here, which, you know, was thinking at some point to move. And at that point, when they, again, approached, we were, again, I didn't know whether that would be allowed part of the use. So that's what triggered that particular use to say, hey, you know, maybe it's a FedEx or a, you know, or a UPS store, whether that comes under the mail-in service, and that's basically what we think, if possible, can happen.
Then, I was just trying to figure out, then what's a mail-order business in terms of what you would anticipate that would be?
Again, that would be more like a FedEx or a UPS.
Okay, so both uses kind of there?
Yeah.
And then with the studio, I mean, what size spaces, you know, are there, when I drove by, there were several vacant units. Would you be combining them into one for your, this My Gym?
No, actually, so I'll just give you a brief description of the property. So we have, between building B1 and B2, there are five units. So out of the five units, one unit has been occupied by an urgent care vet, and there are four other units available. If you're looking at the complex from inside, the end cap is a 2,800 square foot unit, then there's a 1,200, and there's a 2,000. So My Gym is, as of now, just going to occupy the 2,000 square foot unit. So we'll still have three units empty after My Gym, you know, occupies it. So to answer your question, we are not going to be combining anything for this particular use, and hopefully that answers your question.
And then, I'm just curious whether or not you feel that it'd be sufficient, parking, if there are people coming and going, you know, dropping their kids off for the My Gym, and how you would kind of see how that would complement the other uses in your property?
So, you know, I'm pretty familiar with My Gym, because, you know, I had my son's four-year-old birthday in My Gym, and this was in Orange County. But I think, you know, it's just going to be, bring in a lot more traffic in terms of uses for Habit Burger or Urban Cafe, you know, uses when parents are, if they are waiting, they can grab a bite. But most likely, the size of the space, the kind of usage, I don't think is going to create any issues for parking, because restaurants usually take up most, a higher parking ratio. So I don't think My Gym is going to really affect parking.
Thank you. I'll defer, other questions after other commissioners?
And if I may hop in real quick, this is Chair Roth. I think that's a great question. I think that's probably a better question for staff, right? Based off of what has already been previously approved for the site. Are there any parking considerations regardless of the use that we should be considering tonight, or is everything essentially because it's already been approved and we're just making a modification to the uses? Essentially, the parking is what the parking is.
That's correct. Denise Thomas, Community Development Director, that's correct. The, I'm not sure if you, you watched the city council meeting. So staff's about to bring an item in front of the city council or the Planning Commission first, to kind of modify our parking requirements. And the council goal is for us to look for ways to be flexible, to retain existing businesses, and to attract new businesses. As a part of that economic development effort, one of the things that we're looking to, we had to look at is parking. So the way that we approach parking, our code requires you to demonstrate that you can park your uses, but we rely on the property owner to do a parking study that explains to us how much parking is required. What I heard from the applicant is, you come and you park once, but you can use two uses. You drop the children off, and then maybe go to one of the other existing centers. We already have parked for that. So if they were to do a parking study that demonstrated that the parking was adequate, we would issue the building, I'm sorry, the business license, and they would be able to go forward.
And then it sounds like future considerations might even change that dynamic for the applicant anyway?
Agreed. We are trying to get to a point where parking won't limit our ability for businesses to locate in our city. So we're looking for ways to be flexible so that our parking standards aren't, aren't a barrier to entry in our city.
Great, fantastic. And apologies for the interruption, but I'll defer back to Commissioner Stein if any more questions of the applicant.
I should have probably asked staff about the parking and traffic if they had looked at it. I'm also, you know, curious, have you received other letters of intent from tenants in the past that you had to turn down?
Yes.
Because of these prohibited uses?
So we had one from a dance studio that we turned down. And then we had a use from Pilates, so Pilates Fitness, but then at that point, we thought Pilates was not allowed, but then we figured out the fitness use is already allowed. So to answer your question, it was just the dance studio.
Thank you.
Great. I'll defer to Commissioner Platschner. If she has any questions of the applicant?
No, I'm, I'm okay.
Vice Chair Reinhardt, any questions of the applicant?
Thank you. So, you know, we are very excited that you decided to, you know, invest in real estate in Agora Hills, and that center is something that I know Agora Hills is very proud of, because it was, you know, very considered when it was developed, you know, almost 25 years ago now?
Right.
And, you know, a lot of thought went into the, you know, the planning of it so that it would, it would fit into the fabric of the city well. So I know that there, you know, might have been some of these barriers put in, and I think the intent at the time was to make sure that it wasn't just another strip mall, right? So, you know, obviously businesses, you know, the nature of business changes over time, and considering that, you know, there, there are obviously, you know, times where you have to evolve. So I think one of the, you know, my biggest concerns was the parking, because I know that that's something that has been a standard, that we, we are a adequately parked city more than a lot of others, especially like in the San Fernando Valley. However, you know, having a plaza sit half-empty is not great either. So one of my questions was about the gym. I don't have any children, so I don't really know My Gym very well. Do you happen to know kind of the average stay for someone? Is it, you know, a couple of, an hour or two?
Yeah, I'd say even for a birthday party that we had, it was just about an hour. So I think they sell it in hour slots. So I think most likely, most people would actually spend an hour there.
And this is, this is something that's like geared towards toddlers, so this isn't like a 24-hour fitness or.
No, 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 no. They don't have, it's mainly for babies and up to six, seven years old, and, you know, that's just about it, yeah.
I was also today years old when I learned that there was a difference between Pilates studios and dance studios.
Yeah.
So I think, just echoing on Commissioner Stein's questions, I wanted to know if you had had any additional inquiries. So, you know, one of the things that kind of, I guess, was flagged for me was the places of worship, and I'm not inherently against that. I just am thinking about the car trips, and trying to make sure that the flow of traffic would be, you know, convenient for all tenants in the property.
So to answer your question, as an owner, I think that would be our last consideration too, because we want businesses that move in to be occupied from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., not, not a business that is, you know, going to be on a weekend or a particular, a particular time period. We would love the center to be open and active. So I think we will pursue tenants who are not on a one, one spot or a one-day kind of opening, like a church or any religious organization for that matter. So I don't think that'll be our preference. I think it was more when staff supported it. I just didn't want to remove anything out. I just wanted to give it enough flexibility. So I just don't want to come back here if for any reason. So it's, it's, that's not really the intention that we would want. I mean, you know, so, so I hope you should take comfort in that.
That's, that's a good answer, and I can understand not wanting to, I mean, as pleasant as we are, I can understand not wanting to, you know, have to come up, you know, before us a few times, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Sure.
I see Commissioner Platschner now has a question?
Yeah. So how many days per week will these businesses be open? Because you have a church or temple, it's going to be more on the weekends, right?
Yeah. And that's one of the reasons I was just telling Jessica that that may not be a use, that, that wouldn't be our first choice of putting a church or a temple or any other organization, religious organization into the center. Absolutely.
So the gym is open seven days a week?
Gym is open seven days a week, yes.
And what are the hours?
I think, I'm not too sure. I have our realtor here. I don't know whether you can give us when gyms.
I can look it up actually really quick, but in general, it's usually about 10 to like 7. They don't go too late because it's young kids.
Sorry, can we ask you to come up to the mic?
Come up to the mic.
So it's on the record?
Okay, so I'll, so I think the answer to your question is that we presume it's going to be between 10:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m., and it's not going to be later than that because it's young kids.
As a parent who's had children go to My Gym, I can attest, it's not a, it's not a 9:00 p.m. 24-hour fitness. All right, well, Chair Roth here. I don't have many questions other than the t-shirt. A little offended by that, I'm kidding. No, but really just want to express our appreciation for you coming tonight and working with our city staff to make this usable, you know, have use cases that function well for you and trying to attract businesses. I'm very eager to hear that My Gym is looking at a location here. I have two young children in the city, and I think that would be a great use for the area. I actually have less concern about the parking. I did want to make sure that we had both, you know, your perspective on it and staff to share, because I drive past that lot, you know, the center quite often, and it does seem quite often that it's closer to maybe even 25% capacity in the parking lot that's currently being used. So I think My Gym is going to generate great revenue opportunity, both for your other, the other tenants that are there, as well as just, you know, bring more life to that, to the complex. So that's really exciting. I really don't have any questions, so you may now sit down. Nope, sorry, Commissioner Stein.
Sure.
Got it, one more here.
No worries.
For My Gym, how large would it be? And then, in terms of your vacancy, how much will that fill your center up?
So it's about 2,000 square feet, My Gym. We have about 13,000 square feet in total to, so we are, and one space is already leased out, so I would say we have about 4,500 square feet leased out out of the 13,000 square feet. So it's, I would say 33%, 35%? So I'm hoping that once My Gym comes in, it'll become a catalyst to hopefully we can get some traction on the other, you know, on the other vacant spaces.
And maybe this would be a question more for your, your broker, but I like the idea of My Gym. What other type of uses, if they came in, would all of a sudden say, I want to be there because it's complementary to that particular use? Are there specific type of uses that you think you would then be able to track that's not even on what we're looking to remove onto prohibited list?
Actually, it's funny that you bring that up, because it's, we just got a tour last, I think this week, and an interest from robotics, children's, I think it's a school, but they were like, you know, if you're having My Gym there, I think we would be, I think they already are in the city of Agora, but they are looking to relocate. So they found there could be synergies between My Gym and this particular space. So I really don't know whether that's a prohibited use or not, but then I'm hoping that we can, we'll cross that bridge when it gets there.
And let's reserve that question for staff, because, actually thinking, this is a question I had when I was reviewing it and considering other use cases in the city. So I'll ask that question as well. So any further questions for applicant? Right, hearing none. You may now sit down. You'll have an opportunity to rebut if there's public comments here in a little bit, and I'll call you back up to the podium for that.
Okay, thanks.
I will now defer to our city clerk for any public comments. If you have something to distribute to the Planning Commission, please hand it to our city clerk. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. I'll defer to our city clerk.
Thank you. No written correspondence was received, and there are no speaker cards.
Great. So now I do defer back to you as an applicant. You have the opportunity to rebut or provide five minutes of any further testimony if you'd like. So feel free to come up. Otherwise, we'll continue with our, our hearing and then let, let, let the things happen as they, as they do. It's entirely up to you. Great, I think the applicant is going to defer on that. So before I close the public hearing, does any commissioner have any further questions for the applicant or staff? And I will start, Chair Roth. We've had some conversations with the BAS as a planning commission about Kumon, I believe, the facility or the business that he was referring to, the applicant was referring to, is next, the Lego Robotics Lab. And I know that there was a number of prohibited, continued prohibited uses around education in schools, but was, you know, we've got a few like tutoring centers, things like that. With those kind of uses, I think, would they still be prohibited under the current list, or should we make considerations around those?
I will defer to Katrina Garcia, because I believe she has the prohibited resolution, and she can take a look at the list.
So it's kind of hard to answer. Usually you want to know a little more about the use, operation hours, whether it's membership-based, or if anyone can just show up at any time before we say whether it's allowed or not. So until we know a little more about it, it's a little difficult to say.
So, not that I'm going to do this, I'll just use myself as example. If I want to open up my own tutor shop in their, in their center right now, would that be a prohibited use or something that would be permitted either from the prior changes or the changes that are proposed tonight?
Let me look through the list, and then I'll give you an answer.
Okay. Because hearing that, to me, changes a little bit, I think, of my considerations tonight. You know, I want to make sure we're encompassing of current business use cases that, you know, I think when I saw school, and, you know, I was thinking more of like, you know, maybe perhaps like an offshoot of like Pepperdine or something like that. I wasn't thinking about like a children's oriented like tutor facility or an educational facility like that. like that. If my gym is going in there, I think there's a natural synergy with young children and like tutoring opportunities and other educational opportunities. So, I wouldn't necessarily want to prohibit that, but would want to figure out what makes the most sense tonight with that in mind.
So, the prohibited use list still contains other schools, other school uses, like business school, modeling school, college, university, a trade school, and a self-defense, judo, boxing, and gymnastics school. And it also prohibits a childcare center. So, if we're looking at potentially Kumon, it doesn't really fall under childcare center, but it may fall under one of the school uses.
Okay. And I don't, I don't want to blow this up. Going back to the applicant referring to my gym coming up and gymnastics being one of the precluded uses, is that not a conflict now?
So, this particular use would be a school for gymnastics. My gym is essentially like a children's play center.
Okay. So, then, under that kind of framework, it probably then would make sense that any other kind of educational child-like, you know, Kumon or thing would probably, sorry, would probably be permitted because it's not like a school of X or whatever. Is that correct? Sorry if I'm complicating. I just want to make sure we get to the bottom of this because the applicant indicated he doesn't want to see our faces again for some time.
Yeah. I understand your question. I would just say that generally speaking, we try to be as flexible as possible to allow uses that are similar. So, our analysis would be, is there anything in the municipal code that is allowable and not on the prohibited use list? If so, we would go ahead and allow it. And so, for that reason, off the top of our head, I probably couldn't give you a definitive answer for that question. We'd have to look at the actual use list in the CRS zoning districts, see if there's anything that's more appropriate, and then compare it to this use list.
Before we finalize that, I'll defer to other commissioners on questions, and then we can, we can revisit that toward the end for deliberation. Commissioner Stein, do you have any questions of staff or the applicant?
Done.
Commissioner Plaizer?
I have a question. With the church slash temple, there's religious schools. Where does that fall?
That would probably fall under a religious institution.
Commissioner Reinhardt? Sorry, Vice Chair Reinhardt, my apologies.
That's okay. Out of that slide this time. So, I guess, you know, echoing on some of the follow-up questions that Chair Roth had, I think that what we want to, you know, what, what all of this is, is making sure that the intent of this resolution is encompassing enough so that we're, you know, serving the community by making sure that there aren't vacant businesses, but also serving the original intent of having, you know, some sort of, I guess, restricted list on here. Because when this was originally done, it was, the design was that so that there wasn't something large going in there, like, you know, a large institution that would take over the whole area and make, you know, lots of car trips and things that, you know, weren't the original intent of the, of the plaza, which was to be small businesses, right? So, you know, with something like, you know, the Robotics Academy or, you know, activity-based things, it sounds like those things fall under, you know, businesses that have an educational slant to them, but that, that aren't necessarily considered schools, right? Because they're usually maybe membership or subscription-based, or people pay per activity, right? So, it's, it's still considered, defined as a business. It just happens to be a business that has some educational elements geared towards children, correct?
The answer to your question, the answer to your question is yes. When we say schools, it's either school public or school private.
Okay.
If what they propose to do, that's just instruction. It's, it's instruction. And we have a few uses in our code that apply to that. We also have entertainment uses that the broad definition of them could encompass, depending on what types of uses the children, what types of things the children would be doing at the Kumon center. But we allow training, training centers and things of that nature where a Kumon or a Lego or a mathnasium or one of those types of uses would fall into that use category. And I ask them to take a look at the prohibited use list to see if those lists, those uses are not there. We have Kumon in the city in our CRS district, so we clearly allow them in our CRS district. The only wrinkle is they have a prohibited use list, and we have to compare it against what the code allows. So, right now, they're checking to see whether or not it's part of the prohibited use, but we believe there's a pathway to allow a use like that.
Okay. Thank you.
And, yeah, I appreciate that, too. Sorry, do you have any other questions?
I think I'm okay for now. Thank you.
Yeah, Chair Roth here. Yeah, I just want to make sure before we proceed, we can clear that up because otherwise, I think that would be a consideration for, I think Robbie's indicating maybe he feels comfortable to proceed as is. I'm not sure.
I'm honestly thinking about a five-minute recess, just to double-check.
Travis, is that appropriate? Sorry, city attorney.
Can I ask one more question of the applicant? Just real quick.
Yes, let's ask Commissioner Stein's question, then we'll go into a five-minute recess, if that's appropriate.
I just wanted to click, did you say that one of your current tenants is a vet?
Notes and care.
Go ahead, yeah. Because that was removed on the list in 2017. So, I'm seeing that there's some success then in removing prohibited uses. Thank you.
Great. And with that, we'll now recess for five minutes and return at 6:50. And, and do I have to do a roll call vote for anything? Great. We'll recess, and then we'll reconvene at 6:50. We've got just one minute, so if we need to continue and add an additional five, just let me know. Great, I'm seeing from staff, we're going to actually add five minutes to that, so We have one more minute left. I'm going to do a time check. Are we good to go? Great, I'm going to wait until this clock says 6:55. Great, we have now hit 6:55, and we're going to return from our quick recess. While we were on recess, we've had some public comments arrive from the crowd, and so I will now defer to our city clerk to allow those public comments to be heard.
Thank you. We did receive two speaker cards. Todd Nathanson, followed by, is it Stefan Siegel? So, if he'd stepped up.
Just real quick, you have three minutes, and your speaker, time may not be transferred. You will see a yellow light on the dash there. That will indicate that you have one minute. When it's red, the mic will turn off. I now defer to your public comment.
Hello, everybody. Todd Nathanson, broker, property manager, and resident of the neighborhood. Very concerned about bypassing the system that's in place for uses that can be considered concerning. We've talked to, we manage the property adjacent with the restaurants, and I'm concerned about giving carte blanche to certain uses that were considered questionable in the past. This process works well for certain uses that the city felt were restrictive and placed restrictions on initially. I was part of that 2016 appeal to put the vet in that, in their property, and we were triumphant. It worked well with the community, but we needed to make that appeal. We have no problem with, with certain uses. A school and things that benefit the neighborhood, we're all in favor of. But I don't think it serves well to let the property owner make certain decisions on uses that the community were concerned about originally. Anything that we feel is worth consideration should be brought forward to a panel like this one, presented and decided what works well for the neighbors, the residents, the adjacent business owners, investors that share parcels on Canwood. So, that was the main concern. We've been talking about it for some time. I was hoping to come to terms and not bypass this important part of the, the process of deciding what works well for... bypass this important part of the process of deciding what works well for the community of Agur Hills. That's all I had to say.
Great. City clerk, any other public comments?
Yes, our next speaker is Mr. Siegel.
Great, Mr. Siegel, you have three minutes, when the light flashes yellow, that means you have one minute left, and then when it's red, the mic will turn off after three minutes.
I live in the neighborhood, my daughter lives right next door in the apartments over there. They've recently had a lot of homeless over there, drug addicts, all sorts of people, police are in her in her neighborhood, in the apartments there, all the time. And as a resident of the neighborhood, we're just very concerned that, as Mr. Nathanson said, that it should be something that is good for the community, and that if it's restricted now, that it should at least come up for a vote later, and not just give carte blanches and let people do whatever they want to do over there. There are certain businesses that I understand they want to put in there, that would not be good for the community, or not good for the people who live in the apartments. That's basically it.
Great, thank you very much. So, we're gonna have to kind of revise the order of operations tonight, now that we've allowed some public comment. Travis, correct me if I'm wrong, should we allow fellow commissioners to ask any questions in response to the public comments to staff and the applicant, or should we defer to the applicant for a five-minute rebuttal?
I think at this point, we reserved five minutes earlier for the applicant, they deferred, but if they would like to respond, I think we can give them their five minutes now.
So, if you would like, before, there was no public comment, now there has been, so you have five minutes, same situation as before, when the light flashes yellow, it means you've got one minute remaining, and then when it's red, your time will conclude. Thank you, and I will now defer back to you.
Sure. So, I want to address the second comment first, is that even we are concerned about homelessness and homeless people being there, and that's one of the reasons, and the reasons that they are there is because the property is not leased. So, the idea is to get the property leased, and you know, and so there are uses and businesses in the space, so that way, we don't have the homeless problem. We have been dealing with it, we have actually been there, put stickers out, you know, trying to keep them away, but I think the only permanent solution is to be able to lease the space. So, I presume we are, you know, in agreement with what he's saying, and we want to make sure that, you know, what we're doing is actually going to resolve the issue, his issue. That's all that I need to say. Thank you.
Great, you may now sit down, we might now have follow-on questions of you and staff, but you may now sit down. So, we're gonna go back then, I think, kind of in the process correct, before we go back to the original reason why we went on recess, but if any, as a result of the public comments and the rebuttal, if any commissioners have questions of the applicant or staff, you may now ask that. Neither do I. Great, so there being no further questions, am I, okay, I see our community development director would like to jump in here.
Thank you for the time, thank you for the time to be able to look over the code. The types of tutoring facilities that you are asking about, and that they are, they have a potential tenant to lease the space, is a vocational school. And the list of prohibited uses does not allow a vocational school, so if you wanted to pay, vocational schools are permitted in the commercial retail services district, so if they didn't have the prohibition on their property anywhere else in the city where you have CRS, you would be able to by right have a cuman, or mathnasium, or one of those uses. At this particular site, unless the school-vocation use is removed from the prohibited list, they would not be able to have a cuman.
And then, this is Chair Roth, so then, as a follow-on question, if I understood you correctly, earlier you had mentioned that the other CRs are designated areas where there's the cuman, there's already the pre-existing location that I think has expressed interest in moving facilities over there. Those are the same zones, and those are approved uses there, but currently, right now, with this prohibited use list, is not permitted in their parcels today, is that correct?
Yes, Chair, that's correct.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any further questions before I close the public hearing? Vice Chair Reinhart.
Thank you. So, cuman is considered a vocational school?
Per our code, yes.
Okay. Could you define exactly what a vocational school is? Because when I think of a vocational school, I think of like, a trade school for adults.
We actually have a school that's called School-Trade in our code, and we have School-Vocation. So, essentially, when you go to one of those facilities, they teach you different skillsets, and they're providing you with instruction to learn those different skillsets. So, if they're teaching you robotics, then that's what they're teaching you. If they're teaching you, if they're tutoring you on math, and math is the focus, then that is the thing that they're teaching, that they're teaching you. So, our use table doesn't discern between adults and children, and our definition section doesn't have a vocational school definition, so you have to rely on the definition in Webster's. I think Chapter Two of our code says the dictionary definition, and I think it cites Webster's. So, essentially, what we've been doing in other areas within the city, that CRS, to allow these tutoring facilities and these other facilities that teach special skillsets, like robotics, like math, are, we've been allowing those under our School-Vocation definition. So, we would do the same here.
If amended, if tonight's prohibited list is amended, correct?
We would evaluate it as a School-Vocation. And if the prohibited list says you are not allowed to have a vocational school, then we would not allow, we would not allow the use. If the list is amended, and you guys vote to amend the list, then we would allow it.
I guess my question, maybe this is for our city attorney, if these are already approved uses in the same zone elsewhere in the city, and it wouldn't be approved for this location, I guess that should be of consideration tonight, right? Because then, it would become a legal matter?
So, let me see if I understand your question, so you're saying, if we remove it from the prohibited list, would this be allowed in the underlying CRS zone?
Well, I think, no, if, without showing all my cards, if we remove it from the list, then it corroborates what is already taking place elsewhere in the city. If we leave it, the applicant then would be calling you and saying, "This is permitted elsewhere, but not permitted in my same designated zone."
I mean, without getting to hypotheticals, yes, it's possible.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions?
Yes, for staff. When we are making our decisions, can we say, "We approve 1, 3, 5, 7," or do we have to approve all the ones that you're making a recommendation on?
So, the original resolution, the original entitlements by the city council authorized the planning commission to approve this list. Do you have discretion this evening to add or subtract anything that you would like from this prohibited use list, as long as we have clear justification for why you would like to add or remove it? So, that is under your purview this evening?
Thank you.
Are there any further questions on tonight's hearing? And I did see, we did receive two new audience members, I just want to be mindful that we are still opening the public hearing before I close it. Have you received any further public comment cards? Okay, great. There being no further questions, I will now close the public hearing, and we'll now move to deliberations. I will go to my left, that's all I can do tonight, and go to Commissioner Stein to kick us off.
First of all, you know, I remember when this project was being developed, I was very excited to see that Agur Hills was gonna get a number of apartment units, and new restaurants, a hotel, other uses, and, you know, watched it be leased, I saw tenants move in, tenants move out, some, for whatever reason. To be very honest, I was never aware of the fact that there were prohibitive uses, and, like, you know, amazed that, you know, we still have that for this type of property. I also recognize, you know, this was supposed to be pedestrian-oriented, at best-laid plans, but 25 years later, is that still working? And I look at it, you know, and I do have a real estate background, that I do not want to see empty spaces. It's not good for the owner, it's not good for the city. And then, so the question for me then is, you're coming forward and asking, hey, can we now add these type of units to our property that are currently prohibited? You know, I look at each one individually, and that was why I was trying to get an understanding of what a dressing and mailing service, because we do have some stores already in the community, and, you know, how many can we really support? I don't have an answer to that, you know, but that would be really up to, you know, whether or not a tenant would come forward. You know, I was very excited to hear about My Gym, I think that that would be a great addition to the community. And so, just hearing what you presented, well, I guess Mr. Nathanson and Mr. Siegel commented, I have less concerns, yes, I am concerned about homelessness, I wish we didn't have that problem, but in viewing everything, I can make all the findings and approve this.
Great, thank you very much, Commissioner Stein, Commissioner Platzer.
I've been a resident, my family, since 1981, before cityhood. And I've always wanted this city to stay the same, and unfortunately, it isn't. I own horses, llamas, I changed the laws. And I was around when this oak pedestrian area was proposed with the creek, and it was gonna be accessible everywhere, and the shops were gonna be small. And I went today, and I saw four or five places that were totally unoccupied, and I was sad. And I think homelessness comes when there's empty properties. And these businesses, except for the convenience store, I would not want alcohol to be sold there, which would promote homelessness. But I think these businesses are pretty benign, and actually would help the community, because there's no real recreation for children. And we need that, and that was always a problem when my children were born, and they went to schools, that there was nothing to do in the city. So, we need something to do in these cities, and I can make all the findings.
Great, Commissioner, sorry, Vice Chair Reinhart, I apologize.
Thank you, Chair Roth. So, you know, echoing the sentiments of my fellow commissioners, the city is always a balancing act, and one of the things that I tried to do when I, you know, looked at this item on the agenda, is really consider, what was the original intent of these restrictions? And how has the nature of business in the city evolved since then? What can we learn? I mean, just like events, right? You know, as a city matures, or something grows, there, we have learnings, right, from all of those things, and I love the idea that, you know, the business owners are looking to work directly with the city, and we are always trying to make sure that there's a good dialogue and advocacy, so that, you know, the owners of a property have the opportunity to flourish, and none of us want to see blight, and none of us want to see, you know, homelessness, or, you know, have increased crime or anything like that. So, you know, I, looking at what the original intent was with some of these restrictions, some of these things, as, you know, I mean, who knew that we were gonna have AI and robotics tutoring in our city 25 years ago? It wasn't something that was on anyone's radar. So, I see, I see, you know, concern with some of the, you know, businesses, I think, you know, Commissioner Platzer brought up the, you know, convenience store, and I know I was concerned about some of the parking with, you know, if there was a larger house of worship that was to go in. But I think that some, that there are still guardrails in place with these items, right? So, with the convenience store, the fact that there would be a CUP and a liquor license application that would still have to go through before that type of business could exist, there are guardrails to make sure that the community is served by the businesses that are going in there, even if we do, you know, relax some of these restrictions. So, with that, I too can make all the findings.
Great, Chair Roth, I have a few comments actually to what you made. Vice Chair Reinhart, first, my understanding of this too, is that alcohol is already permitted on-site, right? So, there was a restaurant there previously that sold alcohol, that was a decision that was made, passed in 2017. That is not on tonight's agenda. Off-sale establishment of alcohol, alcohol off-sale establishments and liquor stores are still prohibited uses, bars and taverns. Any new, and correct me if I'm wrong, any new permit for a restaurant that would include on-site alcohol sales would still have to go through a CUP process, is that correct?
Yes, that's how the code is currently adopted.
Thank you. I agree, I largely don't find any of these uses, even the convenience store, under those considerations to be of concern. My bigger concern is the vacancy. As someone who's, you know, lived in the city my entire life, I would love to see 100% occupancy in all of our business uses and facilities across the city, and see those tax dollars coming into our budget, and seeing you all thrive in our wonderful city. I do have concern based off of the prior conversation, that we should include the School-Trade in the School-Vocational as an exempted use now, exempted would be correct? Or approved use?
So, we would be removing vocational school from the prohibited use list, is that correct?
Yes, and be eager to deliberate on that fact. I can make all the findings, as they currently, have been written in our staff report. I do think we should add language that takes those two off of the prohibited use list, given the fact that there are other similarly designated zones in the city that already allow for that use. We've already heard from the business owner that there's interest in bringing a facility over into his property, with vacancy that already exists, I think that is, to me, going back to the, you know, comment that you made, Commissioner Platzer, about, you know, kind of benign use cases. Given the size of these properties, you know, they're not four, five, six thousand square foot facilities, they're fairly small. There's a My Gym going in there, to me, I would be comfortable removing those from the list, because I think that's not gonna attract homelessness. I think it's gonna attract good business and educational opportunities for our city. I have children in the city, and I would love to see what would be, you know, coming there, so I'm comfortable to move the item as-is. I would be a little bit more comfortable if we moved the item with those two added uses off the prohibited, removing them off the prohibited list. So, I'm not sure, Travis, if I should make a motion or a recommendation, or allow one of my fellow commissioners to make the motion, but that's something that I think we should consider tonight.
It's up to you, if you want to continue discussion on these two items before the motion is made, we can do that, or if you'd like to put a motion on the table and then discuss it.
I will put that motion to add, or sorry, rather, to remove, to make those allowable uses for the parcel, and defer to my fellow commissioners to deliberate over that.
Sorry, Chair Roth, if I may, so just to clarify, the motion on the table is to accept staff recommendation as amended, including the addition of parcel seven, plus the removal from the prohibited use of School-Vocational and School-Trade, is that correct?
To me, that sounds right, given the fact that we're kind of in this gray area where there's already permitted uses, and to me, seems like the right pathway to make sure that there's broad coverage to allow for certain facilities to come in, without us having to go entirely through this process again. So, for me, I'm comfortable with that, as Travis mentioned, as our city attorney mentioned, and would defer to our fellow commissioners to deliberate and/or second that motion.
I have a question though, is the other uses that you would like to remove, is there gonna be ages? I mean, is it gonna be for children, or would it be like an adult trade school? That's, you know, I just want to make sure I'm understanding what you're wanting to remove, because if it's complementary to like a My Gym where it's gonna be, you know, vocational, but it's gonna be geared towards elementary to high school, I can understand that, I just want to make sure that if we're removing it, what it really encompasses, is it, you know?
Yeah, I see our community development director and our city attorney discussing. The way I think about this is intent, right? So, I do think that there is certain risk that, you know, an adult vocational or trade school could potentially become a business entity in the zone if we change this. However, you know, I, I mean, I think there's a risk of it, for sure, but I also think fundamentally, if there are already zones if there are already zones in this city that allow that specifically, you know, we're hard-pressed to say that this parcel doesn't have the access and the right to be able to do that themselves. Kumon could have started post-receiving their permits and approval as a business in our city. They could have started adult school, and that would be permissible with what they've been greenlit to do. And I, you know, again, I struggle with the idea that we would limit one parcel when other parcels already have that, the access to be able to do that. I saw you two deliberating, so I wasn't sure if one of you wanted to follow suit here.
So currently, our zoning code is not set up to differentiate between children's education and adult education when it comes to trade and vocational. So Chair Roth, you're correct that we wouldn't be able to limit it just to, I don't know, K to five or whatever.
And again, I'll follow on. I'm comfortable with that gray area because, again, there's permitted uses of vocational and trade already allowed, and once the permit of that business owner is received, unless if there's, you know, an enforcement, you know, someone trying to enforce it with the city, and the city has to go through that process, right? But I don't think we can prohibit that. I think that would be a limitation on some constitutional rights, so. But yeah, like I said, I'm comfortable with moving it with that risk. I don't think that's that terribly of a bad risk, and again, I don't think that constitutes to, you know, kind of malign use cases that we are concerned about, which is alcohol and bars and taverns and kind of more use cases like that.
I'm more comfortable with that explanation. Thank you.
Commissioner Plaizer?
I wasn't prepared for another amendment, so I, I'm a little confused. I don't know whether I can go along with that, to be honest.
Okay. We can have Travis, our city attorney, kind of reframe everything in a little bit more clarity than I would be able to. Before we do that, Vice Chair Reinhardt, do you have any questions?
No, I was going to make a motion for a second.
So we have a motion and a second. Our city attorney, would you like to kind of reclarify what this would establish if we were to move forward with this addendum to the resolution tonight?
So basically, the amendment will just remove two of these additional uses from the prohibited list, right? So we would, negative to a negative, we would now be allowing vocational schools and trade schools within this project.
Counselor, would you be able to, or could staff formally define the difference between trade schools and vocational schools? I know Director Thomas mentioned that it was in some of the, you know, language that we, you know, had in our packet, but I would just like for the record, for the public, to understand the difference since this is a public forum.
Sure. Denise Thomas, Community Development Director. So vocational schools, vocational schools and trade schools are very similar, and, but for the fact that they both exist simultaneously in our, in our use table, they would be one use. It would either be a trade school or a vocational school. You wouldn't necessarily have both of those in the use table. But if you look at our use table, you'll find that over the course of 40 years, we've added and taken off many uses, and some of them have exactly the same words, sometimes, sometimes transposed. But essentially, the difference would be a vocational school or a trade school teaches you some specific skill, and our code doesn't differentiate between the age of the person receiving the education, but it does teach you a skill. In instances, I would see, if you came in and said, "I want to do, I want to get a certification so that I can become an electrician," that would be a trade school use. "I want to bring my child in so that they can learn to build robotics," that would be underneath the vocation, because the trade school leads to a certification, whereas the vocation is just leading to additional education. Does that, does that provide any guidance for you?
Did you have any follow-up questions?
Yes, how big are these trade schools?
There is no limit on how big a trade school could be. We don't regulate the size of the trade school. Based on the testimony that the property owner gave, their suites are 1,200 square feet, 1,800 square feet, and 2,000 square feet. So if a trade school wanted to come in, they're limited by the size of the suites that this development offers. If it were in any other part of the city, they would be able to go in the suites, and we wouldn't, we would, it would be whatever size the suite is, because in the CRS zone in the city, there isn't a prohibition on trade schools and vocational schools.
I have a follow-up question. So with that, though, so if there are, let's say, you know, two adjacent vacant spaces, right? So, you know, one that is 2,000 square feet and another one that is, you know, 1,400 square feet, if a prospective tenant wanted to combine those two suites, would that need to be, would that need to come before the city for permitting or for a conditional use permit through planning commission?
It would not need to have a conditional use permit because the underlying zoning allows trade schools and vocational schools by right. So they would go through a business license process whereby staff would evaluate the proposed use against the Code of Ordinances to determine whether or not it's consistent. If it's consistent, we would issue the business license they would be able to open.
Any other further deliberations? So there was a motion made and a second. Should I return to the staff recommendation, read that all the way through with the first addendum plus the amendment, and then announce my motion and the second, and then we'll go to the vote? Is that correct? I just wanted to make sure procedurally we've got our bases covered. Okay, we're going to table that for half a second. I think our city attorney will speak.
Sorry, we're going to restate it for the record. I will, Chair Roth, if you're okay, I'll word the amendment, the motion here.
Yeah, please proceed.
Okay. So this would be an emotion to approve a list of prohibited land uses for the commercial parcels. Parcels three, four, five, six, seven, and eight within tract 53752 and amend planning commission resolution number 771. And that amendment would include the addition of parcel seven as part of the definition of amendment. It would also include the removal of school vocational, school trade from the prohibited use list attached to the resolution, and two, make a determination of exemption under SEQA.
Great. Chair Roth makes a motion to approve staff's recommendation. Is there a second?
Commissioner Stein makes a second motion.
Great. I will now defer to our city clerk for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Plaizer?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reinhardt?
Aye.
Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Roth, you have approval for the zero.
Great. I will now defer to our community development director, Denise Thomas.
Thank you, Chair.
Great. So are we moving on to our next public comment, or public hearing? Great. Our next item is to conduct a public hearing to consider the adoption of a resolution finding the vacation of a sewer easement located at 29045 Agora Road and is in conformity with the Agora Hills general plan. I will now open the public hearing and defer to our community development director, Thomas, for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Chair Roth, planning commissioners. This is another unique situation for you. Essentially, we are going to present an item to you whereby we have an excess easement, and you are the first step in that process. Robbie Nesevich, our principal planner, will present this item to you, and we're available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Denise, and good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the planning commission. On December 13th, 1989, the city council accepted an easement for sanitary sewer purposes in conjunction with the Mann Theater project at 29045 Agora Road, which is now known as the Regency Center. The conditions of approval for the Mann Theater project required the applicant to construct a mainline sewer extension to serve the project and future development east of Cornell Road. The easement was recorded in the official records of Los Angeles County on February 6th, 1990. After the recordation of the easement, the developments east of Cornell Road have instead tied into the sewer trunk line that runs along Agora Road, including the Wisnans Market Square, which is the property immediately to the east of 29045 Agora Road. Therefore, for the last 36 years, the sewer line associated with the easement has only served the property, which is 29045 Agora Road, and does not extend beyond the property. The easement does not have the potential to serve other public facilities or properties in the future, and is therefore considered excess pursuant to Streets and Highways Code Section 8333(c). California Government Code Section 65402 provides that no property shall be vacated or abandoned or otherwise disposed unless the planning commission provides a determination and finding that the proposed disposal, vacation, or abandonment of the property is in conformity with the general plan. Staff believes the proposed vacation of the city sewer easement at 29045 Agora Road is in conformity with the Agora Hills general plan, as that section of sewer serves only the property at 29045 Agora Road and is not necessary for the city's current or future plans for providing sewer services to the public. The properties to the east of 29045 Agora Road, which the sewer easement was originally created to serve, are now serviced by the sewer trunk line along Agora Road. Since the vacation of the sewer easement at 29045 Agora Road will not impact the city's ability to maintain the adequacy of its sewer system, the proposed vacation is in conformity with general plan goal U-2 and policy U-2.1, which aims to maintain the adequacy of the city's sewer system. So this is the first step in the sewer easement abandonment process. Again, the planning commission, if you find that it is in conformance with the Agora Hills general plan, it moves forward to the city council, and the city council would determine whether or not it is excess pursuant to Streets and Highways Code Section 8333(c), and it would include a list of findings at that time. So with that, staff recommends the planning commission adopt a resolution finding that the vacation of a sewer easement located at 29045 Agora Road is in conformity with the Agora Hills general plan, and I'm now available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Robbie. Does any commissioner have questions of staff tonight? I keep deferring to my left over here. Commissioner Stein?
I'm just going to have to defer to staff and public works that this is unnecessary and we can vacate it. I mean, that'd be the only concern, that it's going not have to be used anymore. So if that's the staff recommendation, I can understand. I just want to make sure that we've looked at everything, and that's came up. And is that mostly because of the new development that this has occurred? That's all I'm trying, what precipitated this?
The actual easement vacation is simply because the easement itself is excess. So the city no longer needs it, and just, so you're aware, the city originally put the easement on it essentially to confirm and make sure that if the sewer line got extended in the future, that that portion of property would always be used for the sewer purposes that the, that the line was meant to serve for other properties. Since that sewer line has never been extended, the easement is no longer necessary, and to answer your original concern, they did, we did put cameras down there and ensure that it stops right there. It doesn't, it does not serve any other properties, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Plaizer, any questions of staff?
So how is the new property going to be served?
The same way as all the other properties. So the main trunk line goes along Agora Road. As soon as it comes off of the main trunk line, typically, if you're just serving your property, it becomes private as soon as the sewer line extends off of the main trunk.
And did the present sewer line serve the theaters? Or was...
Yes, it's served that property.
Vice Chair Reinhardt?
So it, so it did actually, so the easement was used at one time, and it is no longer necessary because of the, because of the improvements that were made after the fact, right? And that trunk line, the trunk line that is there now will serve any future uses?
That's a little bit of a technical question, because technically, the sewer line itself was used, but the purpose of the easement was to ensure that the sewer line served essentially off-stream properties. So if had other properties developed with the sewer line, those, the easement would have been used, but you could argue that it hasn't, the easement itself hasn't been necessary for the last 36 years.
Got it. Thank you.
I guess, Chair Roth, I guess with that in mind, if this has not been used for the past 36 years, why tonight? Is it related to the Regency project and the redevelopment of that property?
It is related, but I would just say that the abandonment of the easement is, the only finding that needs to be made tonight is whether or not it conforms with the general.
Yeah. Great, thank you very much. Any last questions of staff? Great. Do any commissioners have any ex parte communications to disclose? I'll just say, we probably have all driven past the site a billion times, so.
I met with staff this morning, this afternoon.
Thank you, likewise. I met with staff on this issue and have driven past the site my entire life. Great. I will now defer to the applicant. I don't believe the applicant is here. So with that, we will, we will allow them for 15 minutes of their presentation, should they want it, but they're not here, so we will now move on to after the applicant's presentation, which would be asking the commission if we have any questions, the applicant, who is not with us tonight. So with that, the applicant may be seated, and I will now defer to our city clerk if there are any public comments related to tonight's item.
We did not receive any written correspondence, nor do we have any speaker cards.
Great. I will now give the applicant five minutes for rebuttal, which is no longer necessary. And before we close the hearing, are there any last questions of staff from my fellow commissioners or the applicant who is not present? Great. Hearing done. I will now close the public hearing and move on to deliberations. Commissioner Stein?
Sorry, Chair Roth, if I may. Just for clarification, the findings that we're making tonight, again, are consistency with the general plan, not if this is an excess easement. So just want to clarify that as we head into the findings.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Commissioner Stein, I'll defer to you.
In this instance, I'm really relying a lot on staff, public services. If they're saying this is excess, it's not necessary. I can make all the findings and approve this recommendation.
Commissioner Plaizer?
I echo Commissioner Stein's comments. I mean, if the easement has not been used for 36 years, and now you have a new project, and it's going to be a better service of the project, then I can agree with the findings.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Reinhardt?
I too can make all the findings. Thank you.
You to myself. This is Chair Roth. Yeah, I similarly can make all of the findings. I actually would echo Commissioner Stein's comment, really relying on staff to make sure that this is a very technical and wonky presentation and item. I also know that this is a recommendation to send this to the city council, so there will be another layer, should we have missed anything, but I entrust that we have stellar staff that provided us a good report and analysis on this. So with that, I will now call for a motion in a second to approve the staff recommendation, which is to adopt a resolution finding that the vacation of a sewer easement located at 2905 Agora Road is in conformity with the Agora Hills general plan. Will the maker please state your name?
Vice Chair Reinhardt makes a motion to approve.
Thank you. And is there a second?
Commissioner Stein, seconds.
Great. Great, fantastic, and I will now defer to our city clerk for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Platsner?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reinhardt?
Aye.
Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Roth, you have approval, four to zero.
Fantastic, I will now defer to our Community Development Director, Denise Thomas.
Thank you, Chair Roth, I have nothing to add.
Fantastic. So that concludes our two public hearings for tonight. I will now open this up to staff comments. Are there any comments from our staff for tonight?
No, I don't have any.
There's other staff? Any other staff? I'm seeing some nods, some no's over there. And I will now defer to my fellow planning commission if there are any comments to be made tonight. I will just add, I just, you know, it was a great deliberation, and appreciate staff for all of the effort that you put into these reports and working with us, and, yeah, looking forward to our next meeting. And with that, I will adjourn tonight's meeting. Our next regular Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for 6:00 PM on Thursday, September 4, 2025, in the City Council chambers of the Civic Center located at 30,001 Ladyface Court, Agora Hills, California. This meeting is now adjourned.